The July 8th, 2020 meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Go call.
Mr. Dangler.
Here.
Dr. Vote.
Here.
Councilwoman Widdis will be absent this evening. Dr. Selly.
Here.
And Mr. Viera.
Here. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance, with a flag, the United States of America. The Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and just for all.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Before we open the public hearing on the adoption of the budget, Michael Martin, the Chief Financial Officer of the city, has prepared a very old presentation. Will, you're gonna give us.
Good evening. This is a pre-presentation of the 2020 municipal budget for the city of Long Branch. I am pleased to report the estimated 2020 tax rate has not increased over the actual 2019 tax rate. The average assessed value of homes in Long Branch is increasing steadily over the past several years. In 2018, average value was $421,844. In 2019, the average value was $439,400. In 2020, the average home in Long Branch is valued at $472,930. The city of Long Branch doesn't keep all of the money you pay. Approximately 39% of your tax dollar is kept for city operations. Almost 46% goes to the school to fund their operations, and 13.5% is sent to the county for county operations. The library is funded by 1.6% of the total budget. There are two main state cap calculations required to be adhered to illustrated in this slide. The appropriation cap, which restricts municipalities to increase their spending by a maximum 3.5% annually. As you can see, Long Branch is well below this cap by $2,013,529. The levy cap calculation restricts municipalities on how much they could raise their levy to 2% annually. For 2020, we are within the acceptable parameters set by the state for our tax levy. Due to the pandemic potentially affecting anticipated revenues, we lowered our expectations for the municipal court, construction permits, and beach revenues. The difference from those reduced expected revenues are made up in the tax levy. This year, Long Branch's annual budget topped $60 million. Here's where all that money comes from. 69% of it comes from taxes raised in the levy. 7.59% is from local revenues, beach parking, and fees and permits. 7.3% is from surplus anticipated. 7.1% is from state aid. 3.13% is from delinquent taxes. 2.9% is the library tax. 1.37% is other special items. 1.16% is from uniform construction code fees. 0.2% is from grants, and 0.17% is from shared services income. A summary of appropriations is as follows. Salary and wages for employees makes up 44.5% of the total budget. Other expenses make up 40%. Debt service accounts for 11%. The reserve for uncollected taxes is 3.3%. And capital improvements not funded by borrowing is almost 1%. Departmentally, the budget is spent as follows. Police being our largest department is where we spend the most money, at $12,792,613,000. Public Works is our second-largest department, at $7,518,600. Debt service, insurance, statutory payments, pensions, and other departments account for the rest of the $34 million that we spend, as detailed in the slide. The city exercises cost-saving measures whenever possible. We provide commodity resale of fuel and road salt to surrounding municipalities in order to defray the cost of those operations. We contract our services out to other municipalities as shared services for construction official, IT services, and finance department. This year, the city took advantage of a defeasance of a 2007A bond payment. The short explanation is, we paid the principal early on in the year, as opposed to December, when it was due, and saved almost one year of interest equating to $43,831. We plan to do the same for the payment due in 2021 also. For capital this year, the city has many road repaving projects planned, along with sidewalk drainage improvements. We will also be dredging another portion of Lake Taconasse. We will be doing major improvements to the Third Ave Transit Village area, and we will be renovating our newly acquired building, formerly the Bank of America Building. I'd like to point out the benefits of living in Long Branch. We have the lowest-priced seasonal beach badge in Monmouth County. We have bi-weekly residential garbage pickup, semi-monthly brush and bulk pickup. Long Branch has a full-time paid and volunteer fire department, a recreation department that offers a multitude of sports and activities with continuing beautification of parks and open spaces. We have a very active senior center with over 900 members. We have year-round festivals, fun days, concerts, and ocean fest. We have a full-time health department and a nationally-recognized library. This concludes the presentation of the budget. If you have any questions, there will be time for public comment after this. Thank you.
I need a motion to open the public hearing on the 2020 municipal budget.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If any member of the public has any comments to make regarding the 2020 municipal budget, please dial star nine on your phone, and representative will call you. The last three digits of your phone number. When you are called upon, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Caller whose phone number ends in 198, go ahead.
Then, Senator Laporte, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Over the past few council meetings, I've asked the technical questions on the budget that were necessary. This evening, we're gonna discuss an Elberron resident named Robert Girardi, who just recently took to social media to display his disgust with the current Palone administration, like so many others with the financial picture in this town. In the past five years since 2016, Mr. Girardi's taxes have increased 38%. Yes, 38%. It is clearly understood that the county tax board administrator, Matthew Clark's, new method of assessment, the ADP, is brutally flawed. And that program has also failed to streamline the appeal process and make the property assessment methodology more transparent. The state needs to adjust the assessment methodology and immediately implement an assessment model similar to New York City, where the most recent three-year average of assessments smoothed out any spike evaluations. Such a remedy would partially assist Mr. Girardi. Now, however, how does the budget help Mr. Girardi? It doesn't. The flat rate is a joke this evening. There should have been a decline in the rate, a payback to the taxpayers with all this crowded redevelopment. A payback to the taxpayers, so as to assist them, but no. And the selfishness of the Palone administration, the Palone administration gave two new long-term tax abatements. The Palone administration, and keeping in mind Mr. Martin's remarks, the police department being the biggest expense in the budget. The Palone administration gave a 10.75% pay increase to the brass of the Long Branch Police Department in the middle of a pandemic-induced economic recession depression. Mr. Girardi astutely stated the following, quote, "My issue is both the rate at the increase this administration's collective countenance about the burden it places on year-round denizens. All the while, it was made clear to them," meaning Team Palone, "and expected of them," meaning Team Palone, "to implement some method procedure to dampen the effect, yet they are simply apathetic to the issue," end quote. Well-stated, Mr. Girardi. You are not alone in this observation. Mr. Girardi's remarks accurately display the malaise and frustration of many residents in this city with taxes. Unfortunately, the overall picture for them is going to get worse. This budget tonight is nothing more than a canard. Counsel, you counsel. Board of Education expenses are climbing faster than ratable growth can keep up with. And with those long-term abatements, you counsel have denied the Board of Ed revenue and have placed an increased burden on Mr. Girardi and others via a stealth tax increase. So with the overall tax burden, that being municipal and Board of Ed and county, at the end of the day, the Long Branch resident, Mr. Girardi, and others gets clobbered all around again. That tax-abated revenue on the oceanfront is needed now, counsel. It's unconscionable that you roulette the taxpayers on this abated revenue. In a state of fiscal emergency, it is fully expected that you null-and-boid these tax abatements. Talk about social inequity, the number-one economic issue throughout this country right now, that being social inequity.
Mr. Laporte, your minute, sir.
Peer village and long-term tax abatements, the biggest example of social inequity for those who can well afford to pay the full load on the oceanfront, while residents in this city pick up the additional fallout from those tax abatements. Hypocrisy and social inequity, that's Team Palone at its worst. Peer village and tax abatements, this city and country's national monument to social inequity. There's no real feel tax relief in this budget for the residents. It is with demand and no vote on this budget take place tonight. And I may add, I requested a psychiatrist in this budget to protect the people of this city from the lies and backstabbing of Team Palone with these tax abatements and other things. I don't see a line item for the psychiatrist.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Laporte.
Thank you, Madam Clark.
Caller whose phone number ends in 350, go ahead.
Ernest McNolly, born in Long Branch. I have a home in Asbury Park now. Born on Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. It's a hard act to follow. And I have to say, I'm quite impressed. I guess I could just say ditto to Mr. Laporte's presentation, because I don't think I could do it that well, that factual, that research, that cogent, and that truthful. It's magnificent. And I'd like to ask if when the budget was just read, was that a recording of Mr. Martin?
Yeah, that was a video that Mr. Martin made earlier.
Yeah, why would he do that?
Because technically.
Wait, is he at the meeting? Is he in the meeting now?
Yes. Yes, he is.
Well, why can't he speak impromptu like everybody else? Does that mean I should prepare a video when I call in? Would you accept that? I don't think so. I mean, that's ridiculous, a video? And who believes a word he said? Not me, not anybody. Who's he gonna blame it on? All those misfacts? The video? Wasn't me, it was the video. Anyway, $12.7 million for the Long Branch Police? You're strangling the city with police, who have an excessive record of excessive force, crime and corruption within. Your former public safety director, now chief, is under investigation, was found by the Superior Court to be criminal in his civilian position. That's all still open. Lawsuits flying everywhere. And what do you bring in with this budget? A very weak city council, who whenever you say he's inept, he says, "Stop attacking me personally." It's not personal, Mr. Renone, but you're not doing your job. Really, I'm not a lawyer, and I could do a better job fighting for the taxpayers and residents, all of them in Long Branch, not just the ones east of Ocean Boulevard. And now, by the way, you're moving west of the Boulevard. Here we go, with condos and Jamal projects, with parking all over the place. And then, why didn't you save some of those gifts of all that land you gave away, where they could fulfill these parking things? Remember those? We're giving a diet, a breezeway, an alley, you know, a bequest. How about getting it back now? And, you know, Mr. Laporte said it magnificently. Now is the time, under this pandemic and fiscal emergency, to start yanking some of those ludicrous and questionable things that spawned from Operation Bidwig, Bidrig in 2002, which gave us this master redeveloper and this redevelopment plan, which is fleecing the city and good people I grew up with. Good people, family people, kids. The school's out of control, right? And what do you talk about? Picnic benches and putting picnic tables in front of that silly-looking wave hotel. That thing should be turned into a parking garage. It's hideous. It's a disgrace. And I hear we're gonna get more waves now. It's unbelievable. How do you approve a, you know? This budget should be tabled, and the public should be able to come in there. Well, we can't come in. But we should have all the documents. No fishy thing with Mr. Martin, who is making videos. We want to ask him directly, not off a video.
Mr. McNolly, you have one minute, sir.
12 million, right? 46% for schools, right? Look what's going on in the Long Branch schools. Do I have to be the one? I know you like to brag, really? But look at the numbers. Look at the statistics. Look at the school report card. Look at the issues. You've had murders, right? It's been asked, why did you get rid of the school psychiatrist? Who knows? To save money, to pay for the police raises. Well, you got rid of the psychiatrist, and then you had Long Branch students murdering each other on Van Pelt, shooting each other on Mars, right? Did you ever think, if that psychiatrist was there? All of this could have been prevented. So, along with Mr. Laporte, I'm thinking you need a psychiatrist back in the school, a psychiatrist back in the police department at that timeout, whatever that thing is, Cabbage Patch Room, that you opened up to help the police stop mental illness and killing themselves. That's all.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. McNolly.
Council President, may I just, I just wanted to address Mr. McNolly's first question. Mr. McNolly, if you're still on, as you know, Mr. Martin has been here since the beginning of the meeting, the start of the meeting, and he's here to answer any question live. The reason there was a prerecorded video is that Zoom has technical limitations. As you may know, for the past several years, Mr. Martin has always made a PowerPoint presentation, you know, when the budget is being considered for adoption. We had to do it this way because we couldn't put up the slides with him talking at the same time. The only way that we're able to do it was to prerecord the voice and the slides at the same time. That's the only reason was, again, just to reiterate, as you know, Mr. Martin has been here from the beginning of the meeting and is willing to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council President, no other hands were raised.
I need a motion to close.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reading of the approval of previous minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of June 24, 2020. No move.
Second.
Mr. Dangler.
Yes.
Dr. Vote.
Yes.
Dr. Selly.
Yes.
And Mr. Viera.
Yes. Consideration of ordinance? None here in the final consideration. There's none ordinance for introduction. There's none public participation for the resolutions and the general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments. All in favor? I'm sorry.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose. If any member of the public has any comments to make, please dial star nine on your phone, and a representative will call on your last three digits of your phone number. When you are called upon, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Caller whose phone number ends in 385, go ahead.
Laura, Carlo, 52 Baruch Drive. Thank you for the presentation on the budget. It's nice to see that the rate has decreased. However, with the assessed value up, my takeaway is that our out-of-pocket tax payments will in fact increase. The mayor has done previous presentations outside of town council on different topics. I'd like to ask the mayor if he, along with Mr. Jackson, Mr. Martin, could present in layman terms in the separate Zoom meeting how the assessment process is done so that we, as taxpayers, can understand. Thank you.
We have Mr. Buto, who is the tax assessor in anticipation of a call such as yourself. Mr. Buto, can you?
Certainly, Mayor. On an annual basis, the city undergoes a reassessment, and that process involves a partial inspection of properties throughout the city and a review and revision of any assessments in accordance with the market data review. And I'd be happy if you want to call the office to go into greater detail regarding the sales that were utilized within your neighborhood.
Are you also the assessor? You do that as well as represent the town?
No, ma'am, I'm employed by the town. I'm an employee of the city, rather. So, all our reassessments are done by city employees. We do not utilize any outside services in the establishment of the values.
Seems to be a conflict of interest. I just came from another town in Westfield that had utilized a third-party service to provide those assessments and an appeal process in place. It doesn't seem that you have or set up the same, wanting to make a conflict here.
No, I think that what you're probably talking about is, so, Westfield's in Union County, and they don't have the same assessment program as Monmouth County does. Monmouth County is in a demonstration program in which they do a reassessment every single year. In Westfield, what probably happened is that they do one of those every 10 years. They do a revow or reassessment. They hire a third-party vendor to come in and do those. But Westfield also has a tax assessor, and that third-party assessor is really only a consultant to the tax assessor. So, every town in the state is set up exactly the same way as Long Branch. The difference is, is that Union County doesn't reassess every municipality every single year.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Caller whose phone number ends in 350, go ahead.
Ernest McNolly, born in Long Branch, living in Asbury Park, New Jersey. I've been on the phone for three months since February about people related to Long Branch firemen and police in West Long Branch having underage drinking and drug parties getting caught, right? And nothing happens, very different from when it happens in Freehold or Bradley Beach, where parents are brought in, minors are brought in, information is written down, et cetera. Well, you say, well, why am I bringing it up in the Long Branch meeting? Because you have a policeman who's also a fire official in West Long Branch, who also was told to me by the West Long Branch Police that their son is one of the main actors in this. And you say, what do you mean actors? Okay, I'm gonna tell you actors, right? West Long Branch Shore Regional High School, underage boys and girls being brought in and out of state to these drinking drug parties, right? To the Poconos, right? They're out there now, or I think they're on their way back now, right? But these same bad actor parents who pulled off this February West Long Branch thing, right? Organized one now to enable these kids to go out to the Poconos and rent who-knows-how-much expensive houses. They're not following COVID. They're young kids, under the age, Shore Regional High School, boys and girls, with a lot of parents of cops, firemen, politicians. And I had one cop in West Long Branch tell me, hey, you be careful what you're saying. It's one of my kids. You think I care it's his kid? Why doesn't he do something about it? Why does the West Long Branch chief hang up on me? Why does that no-good, well, I take that back, I'm sorry, I don't want to say no good. But your guy, your internal affairs guy's now, Captain Bard? He's worse, worse than what Schneider had. And now I find out he's a big Schneider guy. That's why. He covers this up. And today, when I was pleading to help those children, he said to me, ah, go on, that last one never happened in West Long Branch. Go on, you're a liar, and you're gonna be convicted of filing false police reports. And he started reading out a jail term to me. Really? Josh Bard gonna read a jail term to me? Really? Really? How about the recordings I have of him trying to ask me to get information to help him get Chief Roebuck? Come on, Joshua Bard. Threatening me? I don't think so. I'm trying to help the kids. And Mayor, why don't you jump in like I called the Shore Regional Principal, who blew me off too? And no matter who you call, the Long Branch School Principal, the Superintendent, the whatever, these kids are out of control by their parents. Their parents are turning them into drug addicts, sex fanatics, risky COVID violators, drunks. What else? And what do you talk about? The best library in the country. You're all in the Twilight Zone. You're in a crime scene. You're the 25th most dangerous municipality in New Jersey. Neptune is number 15, and Asbury's number two. And that's confirmed by the Attorney General, the FBI. In Asbury, the 10th of December 2019, at a town hall meeting. And what do you do about it? You give everybody a raise. You let all these cops off who are going after young girls and drug addicts in Long Branch. They have drug dens, right? Ocean cops, deal cops, they're selling drugs at a Long Branch warehouses. And what do you do? What does the prosecutor do? A slap in the hand. Oh, you're gonna lose. I have one minute?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, you're gonna lose your job. Big deal. When do drug dealers get a sentence of you lose your job? Really? Look what she did with Joyce Jr., that monster. Accidentally touches someone buttocks. He didn't accidentally touch her buttocks. He was trying to rape her. And what do you do? Cover it up. And where's Roebuck's $40,000 a thing that George Jackson won't give anybody? I'm not giving out an intergovernmental Oprah request. You know, Mr. Jackson, you ought to go back to Eaton Town where you came from. Really? You're not running this city. Did I leave anyone out? Yeah, Mr. Renone, and you're doing nothing about it. Your answer to everything is, that was before my time. It is your time, Mr. Renone. Why do you think Aunt Jimmy Aaron and Aunt Selkrim Aaron got fired to see if you could do a better job? But you know what?
McNolly, thank you so much for your comments, sir. Your time is up.
Caller whose phone number ends in 711, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lori Dalton, 455 Atlantic Avenue. I have two questions. One, do you know when the council and the planning board meetings will be going live in person?
Lou, do you know the answer to that?
When the planning board meetings are going live? I, no, I don't.
I, um, no, I don't.
How about the council meetings? Are they still gonna stay Zoomed?
We, uh, we're, we're working on that, Lori. We haven't come up with a date yet, but we're working on that. We're planning to go back soon.
Okay, my second question. Is there any update on the pool timeline, given the CAFRA approval?
Laura, do you know, our engineer is, is on the line too. Laura, is there any update on that?
No, other than the developer is still working to secure. Obviously, there's construction permits that need to be applied for and obtained before they can break ground with the work. And also, the Freehold soils, um, application and certification is still pending. So, those are required before they could start really digging and getting into the work.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening. Bye.
Caller whose phone number ends in one nine eight, go ahead.
Renshun Lepore, thirty-three Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. This evening's agenda, the professional services contracts. Team Palone's pay-to-play gravy train is clearly in place. I'm requesting a no vote on Resolutions one twenty-one, one twenty-three, and one thirty-four concerning City Attorney Renone and his firm, Renone Cocklin Mencello. Mr. Renone, you're not deserving of a new contract as general counsel on Resolution one thirty-four. You can play games, but we see through those games. And you deceived the people of this city with that thirty-year tax abatement for Kushner on Broadway. A matter that Team Palone campaigned against and had an opportunity to stop. And you, Mr. Renone, along with the lying backstabers of Team Palone, went ahead and did it. And you did this, Mr. Renone, at the expense of your credibility. When people say you're worse than the former City Attorney Aaron, they're on the right track. Again, I'm requesting a no vote on those resolutions. It's interesting, the lady before me concerning the Oprah. I oped about the poll. And I got a response back today, there's nothing available. I got more of an answer right now on the phone from the engineer than I did from the city of Long Branch on the poll and the paperwork and application involved. You talk about junk government. The other Oprah I submitted concerning the Garden State Strategy Group and their report, the forty-three thousand dollar taxpayer-funded Oprah. The response from the city, quote, "The requested item is not a public document. It's an interest agency deliberative communication, not subject to Oprah," end quote. Oh, yeah? Taxpayer-funded. And we're not allowed to have it. Just watch. We're gonna get it. We're gonna get that report. It's a shame. Because had the Attorney General done it, the Attorney General would have taken action and spared the forty-three thousand dollar expense on the taxpayers. There should be a no confidence in you, Palone, for denying access of this report to the public, particularly you, Palone, as the appropriate authority of the Long Branch Police Department. And there should be a no confidence in the head of the Long Branch Police Department as well. Junk government. Mr. Palone, recently we saw your little tater-tay in Elboron on the parking and beach access. Not to mention the fact your statements are conflicting and ambiguous within twenty-four hours, but what else is new? What it showed was complete incompetence and a defective nature of you, as has been seen with the tax abatements as well. These were addition, these remarks were additionally supplied by the mayor, tied in with public health and COVID and the governor's executive orders. What did parking on a street have access to with COVID? Or the governor's executive orders? The governor never said parking cars on street ends in Elboron to socially distance six feet from each other. The governor said, uh, said to have the car grills, wear face masks as they socially distance each other six feet apart on the street ends of Elboron to access beaches. Palone, your tie-in with executive orders and COVID was sickening on this issue. When the Snyder administration with you, Palone, vacated a portion of Adams Street that Kushner enroached upon, a street only sixteen feet wide, it was stated at the time there was enough room for turnaround on a sixteen-foot wide street. And you agreed with that, Palone? And those five parking spaces on Adam? Pullman, Park, both respectively. Pullman, thirty-two feet wide, Park, thirty-four feet wide. What was the real reason, Palone? What was the real reason? The Elboron beaches became very popular, particularly with replenishment. Were you losing revenue, Palone? Pier Village wasn't getting their due? I stated at the master plan update, Elboron will be the new frontier for an ocean city for Long Branch. And the people going to the Elboron beaches now are rubber stamping that statement. It's coming. And the master plan is a vision. And that vision for the Elboron Oceanfront is an ocean city. Let the people have access to the beaches of Elboron, despite you, Palone.
We have no other callers, Council President.
I need a motion to close the public portion?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolutions, we can take a list of resolutions as a consent?
Some move.
Second.
Coco?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Yes. Application, there's none. Misleading his business for the good of the order. Councilman Dangler?
Yes, I would just like to remind everyone that the herb side dining outside seemed to be successful, certainly on the weekends. It's good to see that the restaurants are, are trying to get back to a little bit of normalcy. But I do, we ask you guys to, all the residents, to please remember to wear your mask when you can to be safe so we can keep this COVID nineteen under control. Thank you. Have a blessed evening.
Councilwoman Vogt?
Thank you. My comment is very similar to Councilman Dangler. And that's as we're watching these numbers, it's all up to us to do as much as we can to stay safe for ourselves and protect the health of those people we love and who surround us. So, masks can help us. And I encourage everybody to wear their masks and take whatever measures we have to do. Social distancing to keep this, uh, these COVID numbers down and hopefully reduced so we can get back to life as we knew it and loved it. So, my best to all. Stay safe.
Vice President, Councilwoman Mary Jane Selly?
Council President, you did a nice job.
Thank you.
I too, I'm not gonna repeat what Mr. Dangler or Dr. Vogt said, but it is true. You need to wear your mask and you need to remember social distancing. However, I have a couple of birthdays that I'd like to announce. First of all, is Anita's birthday is on the thirteenth. And happy birthday to her. And our mayor is on the seventeenth of July. So, let's wish them all a happy birthday and God bless them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor John, Mayor Palone?
You're Council President. So, tonight we adopted the budget. For the second year in a row, we have a flat tax rate. Our goal is to continue to enhance services for our residents while maintaining a stable tax rate. I want to thank our City Council for their insistence, assistance in making this all possible and for their input. I'd like to thank Mike Martin, our CFO, for his financial explanation of budget this evening. And also thank you for your hard work working to put this budget together. I wanted to take the opportunity to explain some of the services we've added or made this year that elected officials feel you should know about. These services include keeping increasing our initiative for cleaner streets, food enforcement. As many community pool project is underway and started soon. Renovations at the historic Bank of America building will begin next week. This will be a new home for our Long Branch Arts Center and for the economic development. Making renovations, landscape and beautification New Jersey Transit Station in the next couple of months. Some of that work actually is to begin from what I understand in the next. We're very excited for these renovations to be completed. Lake Taconacy will have continued dredging and beautification this year. Uh, and for the second summer, residents will have free parking at the municipal lots on Ocean Boulevard across from Ocean Resort. Our shop Long Branch program has been up and running with dozens of participating businesses. Residents can utilize this program, save money and while also benefiting our local businesses. Our police will soon be resuming foot patrols that was put on hold during the pandemic. It continues to be our goal to increase our communication and transparency for our residents. We'll livestream as we have in all the council meetings. Media. And again, I also want to do a hard work report during the process. And now I just wanted to mention a couple other items in my report. I want to thank our DPW, our beach staff and everything they've done on the beachfront this season. They've been worked hard, especially during these trying times. And we appreciate everything that you're doing. This is very important. There's mobile test coronavirus that will start in the next couple of weeks throughout Long Branch and will be once a week for four, for four weeks. So, we're gonna have it at four different locations. Residents should know that this is free for them. Anyone can get tested. Insurance is not required. Copays absolutely free. You just can, uh, from what we're understanding, you can just go in. Long Branch was selected as one of five or six communities to have this testing. I think there's a limit of about a hundred per day. Um, and we'll have more information about this on our website and social media probably this week. And, um,